We'll call this a regular meeting of the Ketchikan City Council order. Please call the roll.
Kuz?
Here.
Harris?
Good.
Carlson?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
West?
Here.
Zingy?
Here.
Um, please join me with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, brings us down to communications. I had a request to withdraw item 783, uh, which we shall do. Um, that brings us to persons to be heard. Um, the first one is, can I apologize? Marnie?
Marnie.
Marnie? I'm sorry. Your name has got me. Pronounce it for me, please.
My name is Marnie Rickelman.
Marnie.
And I'm the program director at the Arts Council. My address is 444 Dock Street, Upper. And Kathleen Light has a rehearsal this evening, so she was unable to make it, but we just wanted to give you an update as to what's going on with art activities in town.
It's good to see somebody different than Kathleen. Let her know that.
I won't. I was gonna say, I won't tell her that. Um, December in the Main Street Gallery, we had an exhibit titled Youth in Art. We had three hundred and three students from eight schools participate and a total of two hundred and thirty total attendance to visit the gallery. Um, also organized, uh, that kind of coincided with that exhibit was the Winter Art Walk. Uh, we had seventeen businesses participate and they were staying open late for holiday shoppers and to, to help us encourage locals to shop local. Um, the current exhibit is Donnell Landis's Mark of the Beast, and that will be up through the twenty-ninth. And we've had a hundred and eighteen people, uh, visit the gallery so far. And we're in the midst of wearable art show planning, so, uh, we've had fifty applications or entries this year. Uh, seventy artists and a hundred and eight models will be participating. And we've got, uh, yeah. And, uh, eleven new artists and four student groups, so we're excited to have all of them. And lastly, we'd just like to let you know about, uh, some arts education events we've been doing. Uh, this past Saturday, we had a teacher workshop at K High. We had twenty-six attendees, uh, there were seven presenters plus, uh, two partner present- presentations, uh, First City Players and the museum. And, uh, they've had great reviews from that, uh, event and they're encouraging of, uh, creating an in-service or something based off of that event. And also this Saturday, we start, uh, Smart Saturday Morning Art. And, uh, that'll run Saturday mornings, uh, through, starts Saturday, runs through March eighth and we've had, uh, eighteen kids signed up so far, so we hope to, it's kind of our pilot program and we hope to carry it on, so.
What's the Saturday Morning Art program?
Yes. What is it?
What do you do there?
Um, we, from nine to eleven, there's first grade to third grade, and then if you use eleven-thirty to one-thirty, it's, uh, fourth to sixth. And we have a certified, uh, art instructor that will be teaching, um, art projects based on recycled goods and that whole, I guess there's a book that's, you know, you throw stuff away, but where is that magical land of away? You know, where are you throwing this stuff? So, and what you can do with that. So, things like, um, styrofoam containers and you can cut them and use them as blot prints and things like that, so. So, yeah, and they'll do a show on March eighth to sum it up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I'm Judith Heidi, Susan, Mary Ann, Janette, and the skipper. He died today, so we're just honoring him.
I know, you want it to be a cash mob, but it isn't. Well, we are representing Friends of the Library and we're here for closure tonight. It is just impossible to believe that our new library is already one-year-old. That's just, that's amazing. But, um, we're here to, um, wrap up our capital campaign and to kind of recap the library project. And this week, um, we gave Bob Newell a check. Well, we turned over to the city, um, a check for two-hundred-twenty thousand, one-hundred-twenty-four dollars and nineteen cents. And so we're gonna just kind of walk you through what that money represents and, and what happened with the project. Uh, the Friends of the Library started a building fund in two thousand and three with zero dollars, not a penny. And, um, we had a lot of hope that we were someday gonna have a new library, but we didn't know how that was gonna happen. And I remember coming to this council when Mayor Lou was a young councilman, sitting over here by, um, Bob Norton, and asking them, could the city put a library in the capital plan, please? Um, it wasn't even a reference at that point. Over the years, we, we got some traction, but I don't think anything got us as excited and moving as when Marjorie Ann Boss left her estate to the city of Ketchikan for a new library. What a selfless act of a citizen of this community to give that kind of gift to her fellow citizens. And it probably gave us the courage to say, maybe we could have a library. Um, the Marjorie Ann Boss estate, um, has resulted in four-hundred-thirty-three thousand dollars to the city. There's still a little bit of jewelry, I believe. Um, the second biggest single, um, individual donation came from Norman Rehm, who contributed fifty thousand dollars to our building fund. And he never really got big accolades from that. Norman Rehm, uh, was a successful, is, was a successful engineer, now retired. He supports K High scholarships through his personal foundation and he gave fifty thousand dollars to the library fund. So between two private citizens, a half a million dollars for this project. The thing that really, I suppose, helped not just Ketchikan, but communities around the state, was a resumption of the, um, matching fund program through the state of Alaska. Our community got six million dollars for our library, other communities around the state as well got that kind of support. You raise half, we'll pay half, enormous. So, to recap, six million from the state, four-hundred-thirty-three thousand from the Boss estate, two-hundred-twenty thousand dollars from the Friends Building Fund and our capital campaign, and eighty-eight thousand, six-hundred-twenty-nine dollars from the Rasmussen Foundation paid directly to the city as a match for our capital campaign. A total of six-point-seven million dollars in state and private money for a facility that is so incredibly beautiful, so embraced by people already and will stand for decades. Um, our final project, the Friends, will tell you that we held back seven thousand dollars because we still need to finish donor recognition. We want to do something very special at the library to remember the folks who really supported the project. And there were some, um, gifts that don't really show up in the dollars. Um, the most significant of that was the contribution of the Four Acre Group in donating services to Ketchikan for conceptual design, site analysis, and a lot of the preliminary work that got us in a position to qualify for the state funding. And they did not charge the city a penny. And that was significant. Um, so I guess to wrap up, we, um, are here to say, phew, what a project. And we're very happy with it and we just, um, again, we just kind of wanted to close it up and say, you know, we're thankful for the library, we think people are appreciative of it. It's so wonderful to walk in there any day of the week and see people using it and appreciating it, sitting in the comfortable chairs, reading, using computers, taking kids to the children's library. It's just amazing. I'm done.
Thank you very much. Oh, we got a question. We have a question, Judith.
Not a question, I just wanted to make a comment that, um, so many times, you know, people come up to the podium with very real needs. You know, they need help financing something for, um, one reason or another for our community. Um, you know, all of them valid and all of them worthwhile. I've always thought that if someone had skin in the game, that that endeavor is much more tangible as we sit here to try to help facilitate. What you accomplished was before I, you know, really got into this seat at all, but I just have to say it is so admirable that you've accomplished this much. And I don't recall anyone ever giving money to us. I just seem to think it always goes the other direction, so this is a very rare event and treat for me tonight. But wow, what an accomplishment. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Susan, come on back. Now she's got the reels.
I'm probably gonna regret this, but, um, Susan Fisher, three-seven-one-four Bailey Boulevard. You know, I sit at home with my husband and we watch council meetings on the TV and I kind of yell at the TV and tonight, since I'm here, not part of the previous discussion, I, I just wanted to talk about sales tax and utility rates for a moment. And I guess my thinking is this, nobody is really gonna come here and say, hey, raise my sales tax and hike my utility rates. They just aren't gonna do it. You are always gonna hear from the people who oppose, uh, increases. You'll always hear from them. They are always going to speak. But who's speaking for the consumer? I, I mean, I just have to ask you, who is speaking for the consumer? When it comes to utility rates especially, I want you to think about what you're doing because when you take the burden off the big users, you're shifting it to the consumers. There's, it's cause and effect. And I know businesses are struggling, but you also need to remember that those businesses get very real tax breaks, tax deductions for their expenses. Consumers don't get a write-off their utility costs on their federal income tax. So please, hold that in mind. And on the sales tax issue, um, listening to the discussion, um, I gotta say, there is some accounting, but honestly, it's math. There are calculators, cash registers can be reprogrammed. I think a seasonal sales tax makes a lot of sense. I travel a lot. I pay all kinds of taxes when I go to other places. I don't know why we think we need to hold back so much. Oh, a tourist might buy things in another community. There are more issues than taxes. What's happening with the weather? What opportunities are there in that community? So please, think bigger on these issues and not, um, just listening to the people who are saying, don't do it, don't do it, do it. Think about the families in this community and what is really fair to the community and the folks at large. That's all I wanted to say.
Thanks, Susan. All right, that was the last one who signed up. Did anybody else want to address the council, call it up? Astralody.
Hi, Mike Ellerding, um, eighty-three-seventeen Sun Harbor Lane. And, uh, every time I have a chance to address the council, first thing I like to do is thank you guys for your service, your commitment of your talents and your treasures, and the sacrifice of your time, because I know there's a lot of times you'd rather be at home, so I'll make this as brief as I can. I am, um, speaking tonight to the, uh, the sales tax. I'm opposed to, opposed to the, uh, the seasonal increase of the sales tax. It's more than just accounting, um, especially at the property manager. I work at Coastal. The, uh, the, the sales tax that gets assessed to an individual homeowner's, or excuse me, individual tenant's rent, it goes, um, it's, it's a lot more complicated than what you might think. Easy to do the math, absolutely easy to do the math, as far as the reporting that goes to the city, as far as the billing that goes to the homeowner, or excuse me, the tenant. Usually your tenant says, my rent's a thousand dollars, I pay sixty dollars for sales tax. Oh, but wait a minute, from this month to this month, I gotta pay this. Lots of times, uh, people who are renting, you know, forget to pay the sales tax altogether and then to add the complexity of, of changing it in the midstream and then changing it back is, is a lot more, uh, accounting for property managers than, than you might think. Furthermore, you know, just as an observation from, from my perspective, sales tax on rental property, especially residential rental property, is a very regressive tax because the people who are paying it are the people who can at least afford to pay it. So that's a, a topic for a different issue, but, but to complicate things with, uh, increase in the middle of the year and then take it off at the end of the year and expect, uh, a tenant, a normal tenant, to continue to pay it on a right amount is, is the big challenge and it's a huge, a much bigger challenge than just doing the math, just doing the accounting. It, it's, it's a lot of, uh, extra paperwork that would be put on to, uh, business owners and, and the individual citizens, the consumer who actually pays the tax. And finally, um, just an observation, that it seems a little duplicitous on our part to say, come enjoy our lifestyle, come enjoy, you know, Sitka, or excuse me, Sitka. How long did I live in Sitka? I've been here Ketchikan a long, anyway. It's, it's duplicitous to say, you know, we're gonna add an extra tax during the summer season and expect, expect the visitors to this community to, to pay that. Um, I, I think if you're gonna have a sales tax increase, make it straightforward, make it simple. And remember that the people who are paying the tax, those, those are the folks that, that are, are funding this. And, and it just seems a little bit hypocritical for us to say, we want the people who are visiting us to pay those taxes. That, I, I, I just, um, I struggle with that. So, I'm opposed to the seasonal sales tax. I understand that, you know, we need money for the budget and that type of thing. If you're gonna do a sales tax, do it and expect, uh, that everybody should pay throughout the year. We'd like the rest of the taxes. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else want to address the council tonight? See you none. Uh, we'll move on to consent agenda. We've, um, proposing to add seven-A-one, seven-A-two, and seven-A-five. Seven-A-three is being pulled from the agenda for tonight, it'll be act later. Um, do we have a motion to consent? Do we have a second? Madam Clerk, can you read the items?
Third agreement extending lease term between the improved order of Redmond and the City of Ketchikan City Hall exterior and interior renovations project. Loan questionnaire for the Shonbar Road water main replacement project under the ADEC's Alaska Drinking Water Loan Fund Loan Program. And a loan questionnaire for the Chatham Avenue sewer and water main replacement project under the ADEC's Alaska Clean Water Fund and Alaska Drinking Water Fund Loan Program. Professional services agreement between the City of Ketchikan and Victor Four Labor Relations. One percent cost of living adjustment for nonrepresented general government and Ketchikan Public Utilities employees effective January first, two thousand and fourteen. And the award of contract number thirteen dash thirty-three City Hall Furniture, Fixtures and Equipment, Stink Office LLC.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Does anybody have a next question?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Um, first of all, I'd like to, um, mention that I am a member of Redmond even though I don't have anything to do with the, uh, rental or, uh, agreement with the City of Ketchikan.
No problem.
Yes, and also, I have a spouse that works for the City of Ketchikan as a nonrepresented employee.
Um, so does Matt, so everybody else vote but you two on that. And you wanna set them out separate?
I think we should probably do that one separate.
Okay, we'll do that one.
Hey, Derek.
Hold on. Bob, did you have something else? Dick?
Yeah, I am also a member of the Redmond.
That, that's all right. Can you call the roll on, um, item seven-eight-two, please?
West?
This is seven-eight-two.
Go ahead.
Olson?
Epstein.
Carlson? No. Kuz?
Here.
Harris? Severson?
Christine.
Zingy?
Yes.
Yeah, that passes four to one. Will you read, uh, I mean, call the roll on the rest of items.
Harris? Zingy?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Kuz?
All right, that brings us down to new business seven-A-four. Negotiations of an agreement to provide for continued operation of the Deer Mountain Fish Hatchery by the Southern Southeast Regional Agricultural Association. Sarah, do we have a motion, please?
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Bob.
I move the city council authorized staff negotiate, uh, a definitive agreement with Southeast, Southern Southeast Regional Agricultural Association, Sarah, to provide a continued operation of Deer Mountain Fish Hatchery as detailed in the city manager report dated January seventh, two thousand and fourteen. Set agreement to be submitted to the city council for formal consideration and approval.
Second. Who did second, Bob, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, and I talked to Dave just a little bit earlier in the, um, narrative. We talked about maybe putting that out to bid, but I think that, uh, I'd like the, uh, public works department to look at, uh, the possibility of our own food to demolish that building since it's fairly, uh, uncomplicated shell. I think we can manage it ourselves. And, uh, I was sure that they would look at, you know, of course, the, the standards and make sure we have it first place and abate and stuff done.
So you're asking to check, maybe you want to see if we can do it ourselves?
Yeah.
Anybody, council have a problem with that? All right. Anybody else? Call the roll.
Severson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Hi.
Olson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
That passes seven to nothing. That brings us down to item seven-A-six, professional services agreement for the Centennial Building Roof Replacement Design Welsh Whiteley Architecture. Do we have a motion? Go ahead.
I move the city council authorized the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Welsh Whiteley Architects in the amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars for designing the Centennial Building Roof Replacement and approved funding from the Museum Department's two thousand and fourteen Centennial Building Roof Replacement Capital Account.
Second. Who did second, Marty?
Um, Matt and I, and I imagine other city council members have been in the building and it's in dire need of roof replacement.
Your Honor. Go ahead, Bob.
I might understand that this is gonna be, uh, we're gonna design a peak grip on it, hopefully in the future to house whatever air handling system we may decide on.
Good evening, Cliff Allen, Public Works Director, City Engineer. Um, not exactly. I, I did ask the architect to, um, plan an estimate within this, this actual design so we can look at the cost benefit. Uh, we had a little bit of dialogue on it. It, it is not your normal, I don't want to call the building abnormal either, but it's, it's not your normal square building where you can easily set trusses on top of it because of the, uh, the parapet wall and the mansard roof. Um, and the mansard is that steep sloped roof on the sides. Uh, it doesn't have the normal vertical walls that you would, you would encounter, um, on your house. Um, trying to think of a, a building, uh, Mary Frances building next to it is nice and square, easily lends itself to setting trusses on. This does not. So I did ask him to look at that within this design and come back with, uh, realistic options. I think we will quickly find it, uh, will be very costly as opposed to a replacement of the flat roof. So, you're correct in saying we are gonna take a, a serious look at it. Um, but I, I don't want that to be a foregone conclusion.
Yeah.
Cliff, I know that in the past, we had had some workshops and, and looked at different designs and options for the building itself. And one of the things that came to light is some kind of a environmental control, uh, air handler system or, uh, to provide whatever you need in a museum quality type, uh, atmosphere. And the thought was that, that really should go on the roof because we don't have interior building space probably to put that in. Now, again, I don't know if the roof's designed to carry that load and, and all that other kind of stuff. But I, I, I would hate to do a roof twice, let's put it that way.
Understand.
I'd rather see that there was really a genuine option for us to build a roof. It's such a passion, and later on, through an Andy Eber something, we could add an air handle.
Fully understand and, and I, again, I caution about getting too far ahead out, out of ourselves, or too far ahead of ourselves with our expectations. We just haven't done that design yet or looked at that analysis. Uh, air handling equipment can go and often goes on flat roofs or in a penthouse like we have on this building here. Uh, those will all be part of the study and the assessment that, that comes out of this. The type of roofing we're putting on is, is a material, boy, I, I'd look bad. I just made an assumption, I knew what type of roofing we're putting on. The types of roofing that we consider for this, uh, still lend themselves to change. If we have to make modifications, say, bring in a penthouse or part of it has a future dormer installed, this material is still, uh, something that can be spliced and modified. So we, we try to keep our, our options open. Um, we will come back to you, of course, with what the findings are and the results. But I, I caution the architect right up front, expect some dialogue on the slope roof.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dick?
What, what kind of slopes would that, that roof have?
Little or none. Uh, what we are proposing, um, it hasn't been decided yet, is what we call a low slope roof or a taper system where you would install tapered insulation and you would at least get some slope, uh, say a one-to-twelve or a two-to-twelve pitch. The, those that are flat, and I mean flat, uh, are very problematic. You can't find the leaks when they leak. Um, and certainly we would benefit from an increased insulation value on top of that. Uh, from the looks of it, and, and I haven't actually, you know, shot this thing with survey instruments, it appears flat, very flat. Uh, I think there is some pitch in the original design, but, uh, we also have two different roofs on there. We have the old built-up roofing, uh, which was then covered again with the current membrane and then all of the ballast and it's really tough to see what we have and there's a lot of ponding water, which tells me if there is some slope right now, it's rather minimal. It's, it's important to us that we take both of these, these systems off and get down to the, to the original structure.
Matt?
Um, yeah, Cliff, during the discussion, uh, that we had about the museum building with, um, with, that is worth Welsh Whiteley earlier, there were a lot of discussions between pitch roof or staying with the no slope or low, oh, sorry, low slope.
Thank you.
Um, and also putting on a, a tier roof system that would allow us to have taller objects in there. Is that gonna be part of this as well?
Uh, yes, but I can't say to what depth. Uh, obviously, the more we ask, the more time it will take and, and, uh, I'm the last one who wants to come back here for a contract amendment for obvious reasons. Um, so we will take a cursory look at that and I have no problem, uh, you know, involving some of you this, some of you with this as it moves forward. My, my fear, and all due respect as I say this, is, is we don't get bogged down with indecision. Uh, we, we need a new membrane on this roof and, and we're on borrowed time now. Uh, I took the liberty of bringing some show and tell, if I may. I'll pass it around. That photo shows two things. It shows the repair that we just did on one side and the rest of it on the other side. And you can see it is full of patches, it is full of repairs over the decades. It has holes in it already, it's not leaking today. Um, but, uh, this is not an issue to be delayed. I, I cannot overstate that enough.
Imagine you have something else?
I, no, I just, I mean, I, I've said this before to the entire body. This, this building is an issue that we need to take care of and we're, we need to fix the roof. We need to make it so that it's not gonna become an issue for us down the road. But we, we also need to decide what's gonna happen with this building and we need to do it sooner rather than later. The longer we wait, the more of these types of expenses we're gonna have. And then down the road, if we decide we're going to dispose of the building, we're gonna have dumped potentially up to millions of it just to do patchwork repairs or just to get it so it's still a viable building in order to sell. Um, so I encourage us to look at this in the next several months and make a decision as to what we want to do with this building because this item and the next item with the wiring are things that we have to do in order, probably just to get rid of the building so we know we're getting rid of the, I'm not saying I want to get rid of the building, I'm just saying that we have to be able to keep our options open. But if we keep going down and doing all these patchwork changes, we're essentially gonna start down that road with a six to eight million dollars.
All right, anybody else want to call the roll? Don't run away, Cliff. Call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz? West?
Yes.
Harris?
Okay.
Severson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson? Yes.
Yeah, that passes seven to nothing, brings us down to seven-A-four. Seven, back to the same building, preparation of bid specifications for replacement of wiring, receptacles, Centennial Building. Um, do we have a motion? Go ahead.
I move the city council authorized staff to proceed with the preparation of biddable specifications for the replacement of the original wiring and receptables within each circuit of the Centennial Building. Set bids to be submitted to the city council for formal consideration and approval.
Second. Who did second, Marty?
Matt spoke to it with, uh, his previous comment.
Anybody else have any questions for Cliff or the item? Thank you. Call the roll. Call the roll.
Carlson?
Thanks, Cliff.
Yes.
Harris?
Hi.
Olson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
That passes seven to nothing. Brings us down to 788. Negotiations of a contract 13-38 pre-construction services for the Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Project, Leighton Construction Company, Inc., and Dawson Construction. Do we have a motion?
Your honor.
You bet.
I move the city council authorize the city manager enter into negotiations with the joint venture of Leighton Construction Company, Inc. of Salt Lake City and Utah and Dawson Construction of Bellingham, Washington for contract number 13-38 pre-construction services for the Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Project. Set agreement to be submitted to the city council for formal consideration and approval.
Who didn't second it? Bob?
The process went very smoothly. We had great returns on our requests to the RFP. The process was managed by Dow H K M, very straightforward, well-registered, had great interviews, and I think we're going to be pleased with the outcome.
Excellent. Anybody else? No, I'm excited. This is our step towards construction, so. Dave, what's the timeline again to get this back to us and then when they would be hopefully starting up?
I don't have the start schedule. Let's line up the top. Let's get a little pre-con. We would be, I don't know, what do you think? Negotiating a pre-con. A lot of that, in essence, has already been done, based on some of the proposals as far as time to get that back.
I expect to have it back by our next meeting.
Oh, okay.
With room to spare.
All right.
I really do. Much of the groundwork is in place. We just needed some time to tie up loose hands, cross our i's, dot our t's, check with attorneys and be sure everything is buttoned up.
And then when would we see any action on this?
Spring to late spring. How's that for a broad answer? There's a lot of variables.
So they'll be busy all summer.
Yeah, the actions you would see early on would be demolition of some of the exterior buildings and move like that. It really is too soon to say, in all honesty, there's dialogue underway now, even though we don't have a contract signed. Meetings are being lined up. There's been a lot of labor taking place from the contractor perspective. The project manager correctly referred to this thing as the rocket. He says, you get ready because we're about to launch a rocket, and it's going to get very, very busy this year. So I think you'll see some activity this spring in the exterior. Major hospital work will probably take into the summer before we really get into the structure.
Thank you very much. Call the roll, please.
Kuz?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Hi.
West?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to nothing. That brings us down to 789. Reconsideration orders to 1743 seasonal sales tax levy to four and one-half percent from April 1 through September 30th. Councilmember Seaberton.
Your honor.
Go ahead.
I move to reconsider council's action regarding second reading of order number 13-1743, increasing sales tax levy to four and one-half percent for the period of April 1 through September 30th, and decreasing the same to three and one-half percent for the period of October 1 through March 30th.
Moving in second. There's no discussion on a reconsideration, so call the roll, please. This is to reconsider.
Harris?
No.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
And Kuz?
Yes.
Okay, that passes five to two. So, Madam Clerk, we have Marty's motion back on the table for the seasonal sales tax. Is that correct?
Yes, I think so. Yes, and then I had an amendment, too, that failed.
But the amendment needs to be reconsidered as well. If we want to bring that back.
Okay, so this is the motion on there. Does anybody have a new motion?
Your honor, I'd like to request that one of the other council members that voted no, that's a good way to do it, the half percent.
Somebody who voted in the affirmative.
Yes.
Or the negative on the failing.
Move reconsideration.
We need a second.
Does it have to be from the other?
It doesn't matter.
Second.
Okay, now we're reconsidering which one?
The amendment.
Which is the half a percent.
Okay, so we're reconsidering Bob's motion. Oh.
I think Marty made the amendment.
Oh, okay, so the motion now is for the five and a half. Half a percent all year long. Okay, so that's what we're reconsidering. Okay.
So we need to take a vote on the motion.
Okay, and then I'll be back. Okay, and I'll be back on the table then to vote. Okay?
So we're reconsidering the amendment, but not voting on the amendment? No.
We're just reconsidering. Call the roll, please.
Okay, does everybody understand where we're at here?
Right, yes.
Okay. West?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Harris?
No.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Okay, now.
Now the amendment for a half percent.
Is on the table.
Year-round is on the table.
Okay.
Your honor.
Yes, Bob.
You know, at the end of the last meeting, I think there were some council members that were still unsure of how we got to where we were at. But when I think about this seasonal sales tax, it's not only the tourism season, the tourism industry that we would be taxing. We'd also be taxing the fishing industries, the building trade industries, the homeowner that does his repairs to his building in the summer months, recreational activities when the kids are out of school. It's farther reaching than just the tourism. And again, I think that for property owners, especially our property managers, the balance of change in taxes in and out is of some question. When Carl came to us, the half a percent was adequate to get us through this year's budget cycle. I don't necessarily think that at this time it warrants adding another $500,000 burden on the taxpayer. I would assume that my intent would be if the half percent passes, would we continue to look at the CPV monies to see if we can use those, and it should be a priority for staff to look at that in regards to in lieu of tax payments and other things. There's some adjustments I'm sure that can be made, but as we all know, Juno is putting about $1.4 million into their public works operation, and I think that we could easily or conceivably find a place for a half a million, which would free up other funds for other things. I know that there is concern about what's going to happen with the library payment from the borough and other things like that, and we'll adjust to those accordingly. But I think that the half percent year-long makes a lot more sense to me than the seasonal sales tax. And I understand that we have a lot of issues before us that we could definitely use the money, but I think that for me, I think we still need to look at our budget issues. We need to look at our hiring practices, whether or not we're going to review each vacancy to see if it's justified to come back. We have to do some cost-cutting stuff within our budgetary cycles, and we have to try to keep things moving forward, so I'm in favor of the half.
Anybody else? KJ and then Matt.
I just have to make a comment. I'm betting dollars to donuts, we keep it at a half percent all year, we'll be back next year asking for another half percent. Just betting. I'm not making any predictions, you know, what the council's going to do, but personally, the way I feel about it, if we're afraid of a 1% seasonal, 1% all year, that's the way I feel about it. Back in the bank, and I know it's not going to happen. I know maybe one other council person's willing to talk about it, but we're going to come up next year and they're going to, still be short, and we're going to be wondering where we're getting the money. You guys got to realize, and this is not a threat, by the way, for those that think I make threats in my council, at some point, we got to pay for all this stuff we've got. And the only, one of the only ways to help pay for that, the tax increases, increases in fees and things like that, I'm not, it's not popular with me, but it's coming. If we don't do it now, we'll do it next year, and that's enough.
Matt then Dan.
First, the reconsiderations, the continual reconsiderations we get is no way to govern. It's incredibly frustrating and it's incredibly confusing, not only for us, for staff and for the public, and we need to start making decisions up here that we're going to stick by that are good to begin with and not use procedural things to come around and backdoor and get our way. In terms of taxes, we have, we are going to short ourselves if we go to a one-half percent annual this year by a couple, $250,000, $300,000, correct, Bob?
About.
Half a million, okay. So we're going to generate $900,000, and we're going to be short $500,000 roughly. Okay. If, so that's going to dig into our already reportedly low, I don't want to call it surplus, and I'm blanking on the term, reserves.
Reserves.
Reserves. We have not added the fire hall payment at all to our budget, correct? That has not been, the fire hall debt service has not been added, which is another $500,000 roughly.
Right. So the fire hall debt service, the people out of the house, bond construction.
Okay, so at this point, it's out of the bond construction. Next year, it will not be.
Take it there now.
One more year, okay, but that's coming, and that's another half a million dollars. We have already, and we had a, we had a very good budget discussion this year, and I think everyone looked at the budget, and we talked about this budget, and it was the first time I've been on here that we didn't sit there and nickel and dime and go through and pull little tiny items, and instead, we talked long-term plans, and we invested time and made decisions based on sitting here and finally making a commitment and saying, we have cut services enough. We are not going to cut them anymore. We made a stand, and we said, we're done with this. We went and looked at things long-term, and we did that, and we made the vote to raise and to get $2 million in our coffers so that we can make the payments and we can continue doing the things that we need to do in terms of public safety for roads. I completely agree with Bob Seaberton that we need to utilize, CPV I'm not sure about, but the landing fees, we need to utilize those as much as we can, and we need to look at them, but they're probably not going to save us. We have a museum project that we need to figure out. We have a storm system project that we need to figure out how to pay for. If we also do just a year-round, we do put, and we talk about putting the onus on the locals, we put a lot more of that onus on the locals percentage-wise if we go to year-round. And I'll remind you, for tax-free day, consumers and business folk alike needed three weeks to change out their systems. We're giving people three months to change their systems to get notifications out. I understand it's going to have a little bit of headache. I completely understand that. I don't do it and say these things knowing that there's no outcome and there's nothing. I put the thought in that. I had no confusion as to what I was doing when I presented this, and I have no confusion now. It will require a little bit of work, but the economic benefit for the city and for the residents of this community in terms of making sure our streets are taken care of, making sure that we have adequate water supply systems, making sure that we have sewer systems and our storm system, all of those are going to be, are going to far outweigh the difficulty that people have with this increase. And I'll speak about it one more time. Seattle does this, the residents of Seattle are not paying for their football stadium. The people who visit that community pay for that football stadium. It's, the Seattle Seahawks are not Ketchikan's team. There are a lot of people that believe in them. Go Raiders!
Go!
Yeah, we stink, but you know, I have, Seattle does not pay for that stadium. There are communities across this country and across this state that charge the times for the economic benefits. There are, when, you know, charge extra taxes, they charge the people that come and visit them to develop those areas and those items of their economy. I have no problem with this. I'm here in the summer, I don't leave. I'm here in the winter, I don't leave. I will pay the taxes regardless, and I will be proud to pay those taxes, knowing that the services they go into are making my community better, my community safer, and making it a better place for visitors to come to. It's what we need to do. It's not, it's basically, it's what we need to do. And lastly, and I know I've been scoffed at several times from the audience who come up and speak, and I say, I don't hear this. I don't hear people coming up to me. I don't get phone calls saying, do not do this. The majority of people that come to me come and say, thank you for standing up, thank you for making the right decision and moving forward with this because it's something we need to do.
Dan.
I almost forgot what I was going to say. I, when we all sit here together during these meetings, it's obvious we all have different perspectives of what we've accomplished and what has been discussed and brought about. Because I sat here listening to what Matt was saying, and I was thinking to myself, did we do that? Did we do that? It's just that I feel still a little frustrated by the budget process. I think I've been making myself kind of known about that. I don't have any problem with tourism helping to pay for extra things in our community. That's not one of the reasons I've ever voted no for the increase in the sales tax. I know that when I travel, I don't take into consideration whether it's a 5% sales tax there or a 6% sales tax someplace else if I'm going to make purchases and whatnot. But, and I think this kind of goes along with some of the things that KJ said as well, we raise it now, and then next year, you know, things come back to us and it's determined that we need more money, so then we look at other ways to raise this or that, and the cycle just continues. And I think one of my frustrations is that I think there are some inefficiencies in the departments and in our budgets around them that we really haven't, I guess for lack of a better word, had the guts maybe to really address and deal with, and none of it would be popular or pleasant to do by any means. The reason I just keep voting no on these things is because I just feel like it's just never ends, and we increase and we spend, we increase and we spend, and we increase and we spend, and we do have a lot of infrastructure needs, long-term things like that on our The reason I voted no on the increase for the non-rep people isn't because I don't think they deserve it by any stretch of the imagination, it's just at what point do we stop and say we need to dial things down and start trying to stay within our means? I mean, it's just like any other household budget on a million-dollar scale. You know, if you don't have money for the wants, then you dial down and concentrate on the needs. So I just wanted to be clear that I don't have any problem having the tourists pay for things. That's not ever been a consideration when I voted no against these increases. I don't have any disrespect for our employees that, you know, they don't have, that they shouldn't get an increase of some type, but the next contract negotiation, I believe, is coming up with I V E Ws, that's just going to continue to add to our financing needs. I just would like us to try to find a plan, a long-term plan, to not just put these little, you know, put your finger in the dip kind of fixes and try to find some solution. One of the things that I think about or positions in the city departments that are currently not filled, you know, maybe addressing some of those to see if they are things that we really do need to be advertising and looking for more personnel for. But it's just this, I see this cycle just continuing, kind of like KJ said, next year they're going to come to the podium and say, we want, you know, another half a percent for this or half a percent for that, and at some point, it's just not going to be sustainable for our community. And when I say not sustainable for our community, it may not be something that you see right away, but somewhere down the road, it is going to affect our community. So there.
Well, I, um, I hear everybody. Um, I sort of disagree with Deanna a little bit, um, since I've been here longer. Uh, one thing we've been doing is, um, we've been sitting here, um, spending and spending. As I've repeated a hundred times, we haven't raised taxes in twenty years. And, um, last year was the first time in twenty years for, um, the mill rate. And this is twenty-three years since we raised the sales tax. One thing, and, and I don't profess at all, there's been a lot of good councils plus management. You know, as you're looking at the, um, positions, that we don't always fill all the positions. Our management is very conservative in watching what, you know, we always start out a budget looking at, you know, a deficit of six hundred, eight hundred thousand and it always ends up, um, a lot less because they are watching what we spend. We don't spend everything. Um, so I don't, I sort of disagree with you on this cycle of, you know, spending and, um, continuing to raise anything. We've been cutting and I run into the people we've cut, I might try to avoid because I feel so bad we've cut them over the years. Um, and, but we've been trying to keep the same service level all over that time. And, but we've been reducing in those departments to, and still keep that service level. You know, and I, um, and that's why I was on the council from the beginning for all these years, is, um, watching what we spend. And I think, um, this is, um, you know, we've come to a point where we have, um, some increases, especially on that debt service where we have to come up with some money. Um, there's different options and I love the debate between everybody. Everybody has different ideas and throwing them out and it's been great. And, um, I think that's good for this body. It's, um, yeah, a decision time and, um, anybody else want to talk to it before we just make our decision?
Yeah.
Dick, go ahead.
Yeah, I, uh, I agree with some parts of what everybody said. Like KJ may be right that we'll be back in the year, but I would rather work this current year here and try to see what we can do to work more efficiently. Some of those things have been up, uh, been brought up, maybe, uh, retrenching employees that may retire or go somewhere else. But I think we have to look harder at it and, um, I'm going to disagree with Matt. I've watched the budget sessions and I do not believe that we did, that a good job was done on, on looking to think that, uh, we're probably not necessarily need for wants. We've got a lot of wants out there. Maybe the way you define them is this want for me or what they, or I need to use. So right now I support a year-long half percent. Really, I don't want to do anything. But I will support a half a percent year-long and try to work this whole year to see if I can control what we have to maybe increase next year if we have to. But, um, I think that there's been a number of people who speak to the inconvenience of and other things about seasonal sales tax. And, uh, I don't think I probably had one out of, well, maybe one out of ten or fifteen that said, "Do it. If you're going to do it, do it year-long. Don't do it season." And so one person said seasonal, but the rest of them have said, "Do it year-long." And they will live with it. They don't like it, they'll live with it. So I am on the side of we do this, pass this amendment now and do it year-long. I mean, do, yeah, do it year-long to half a percent and work my stomach off to do what I can reduce during the year.
Anybody else want to talk before we call the roll? Madam Clerk, what are we voting on?
The amendment to change it to a half percent year-round.
Call the roll please.
Severson?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
No.
Olson?
Yeah, I'm sorry, no.
Wes?
My bad.
Wes?
My bad.
Carlson?
No.
Yeah, passes four to three. Madam Clerk, now that, I, it substitutes for the main motion, correct?
Um, it can, Your Honor. The attorney and I have discussed at length how this should be handled and because it's such a material change to ordinance, he's fairly confident that it needs to come back for two meetings as an, as a change.
So this is not the first reading, we have to do it again.
We'll do the first reading on February sixth and the second meeting two weeks after.
All right, so we got plenty more time.
Are you kidding me?
Great.
Blame Mitch.
All right, that brings us down to seven B, KP.
I'm sorry, I just have a question about this. So, or a request, now that we've done this, and Bob, I hate to do this to you, is it possible for us to get the projections based on the new income by the next meeting? Okay.
Is there four members that want that?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob.
And then, um, that brings us down to KP. We have nothing vouchers, we have nothing. Managers report. Dave, where is Bob? Oh, okay, wonderful. Marty?
Okay, question. I just wondered if, if there's any change in the status of the old Ketchikan Apartments lot over there? Anything that?
The old hospital?
No.
Oh, no.
Very funny, Mr. Marty. No, the Ketchikan Apartments building. Okay, thank you.
Um, does anybody have any questions on the managers' report? Seen, um, city clerks file?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City attorneys file? Feature agenda items?
Yeah, Your Honor.
Go ahead, um, Dick.
Yeah, I would like, we, we eat this around the bush a little bit here in the last few minutes, but I'd like to see on the next agenda, or maybe the following ones, a discussion of, uh, dealing with Christians. If somebody retires, somebody moves up, who really needs to fill that position or not in order to maintain whatever service that we think is right. Because I think there's positions out there that maybe we can live without and still have the same service, I will be satisfied with it. So I think we need to have that discussion and at the same time, uh, staff can bring forward the list of vac- of positions that are vacant. At the current time, I know there's at least three, I think. And, uh, maybe if there's a projection of who's going to be re- of positions that are going to be retired. Not only lay anybody off, but I think there are some efficiencies that we can realize. And, but we need to have the discussion. And so that's why I'm looking for the next meeting.
How about, the next meeting or the second meeting?
I'm, I'm open to either one of them.
Let's do the second. It gives him time. All right, um, and I'd like to see the same. I mean, we can, I mean, it's a topic that we can all discuss. Um, anybody else? Mayor and Councilor comment. Dick, start us off tonight.
No, I'd like to congratulate the library that turned in some grand dollars. Does a nap, go ahead. Don't have anything.
Judy?
Well, as some of you know, I'm part of a community grant, um, group.
And we appreciate you.
Well, I have some heartburn. Um, and part of that heartburn's over the fact that fourteen point three percent of the hospital's sales tax goes into the pot of monies used to fund the community grant program. Fifty-one thousand dollars, I think it is. And I don't think I'm alone when I say I believe that when the hospital bond passed, that the hospital's sales tax fund is being collected so that we'd be able to cover those bond payments. The total amount that we've allocated at mini-grant program over the last three years is over a million dollars. I think that we need to step up our game and take a look at how we fund that community grant program. I think we need to consider capping the amount. I don't think we can continue to fund every grant application and honestly be good stewards of our funds. And also, after reading the borough's minutes, I'd like to see us adopt the policy session. And I'd like to understand how we find ourselves in a position where losing a good qualified employee to the borough. I don't fault the borough. I mean, it's kind of genius. We move them in, we train them, and we lose them because we can't compete. Um, I don't know how much that young man was offered, but we kept a dog that's worth twenty-five thousand dollars. I'm just saying, and, and I'm, all I'm saying is these are things that I don't understand. And, you know, maybe some of y'all can help me figure this out. Because to me, we have qualified people, we say, "We want to hire local," and then we get upset when they should be paid what they should be paid. I mean, I don't understand this, but I think we really need to sit ourselves down, step up our game and take a look at how we do things here. And hey, I'm having fun now. Thank you.
Well, on that community grants during the budget time, we can make it, we can make it a dollar, we can make it ten million dollars. It's up to the council.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And then on the, um, employees, we have that compensation thing coming up. But if you guys are worried about our budgets, that's our, eighty-five percent of our budget is, um, people's salaries. And I'm very wary about change. And, um, one thing we run into on, um, salaries is a lot of these other communities aren't as, um, tight as we are and they, um, offer better salaries and don't, and these guys can go to places like the borough where they don't even have to pay on their sales tax, I mean, on their healthcare, which we require a little. So, I mean, it's, um, costs money. But, um, that revised little work we did on the comp line is going to be coming to us probably next month. And, um, we're going to be looking at dollars or we're going to have to be tight. Um, yeah.
Yay. Well, I appreciate Judy's, um, remarks. It does, it does, you know, bring things to light. Um, I'm not opposed to paying employees what they're worth. Um, I, I think that's the only way you keep good, long-term qualified employees. And I understand, Lou, what you were saying about, you know, not having increased, um, property taxes and sales taxes in a number of years. I understand that as well. Um, but somehow, somewhere, we've kind of veered off on, um, our budget, um, ability to build up enough of a reserve where we can be more comfortable about some of these long-term projects. To me, I think certainly bringing on the debt for the, um, library and, and the fire department, you know, added a new dynamic to things. And eventually, all those things will get, the kinks will get worked out and we can move forward. Um, but I just think not addressing it and not dealing with it, but that isn't the way to go. I too would appreciate having some type of a budget workshop because at the time the budgets are presented, it's towards year-end and we've all got so many other things on our plate in our minds in terms of the, um, qualities and whatnot as well. I just think that sometimes it's just not real easy to give it a hundred percent in that type of an atmosphere. And if we could do something sooner, and I know that Mr. Newell can't actually give us, you know, definitely all the numbers because of the, you know, constraints with the end of the tourist season and all that kind of stuff. But if we could just work through some of the processes and just look at the departments more independently and whatnot, so that when the budgets do come to us, we maybe have some more tools in our tool belt to work more efficiently with them.
Thank you very much. Matt?
Um, I've had similar thoughts. I, but, um, we have had budget workshops and we have one in June. Almost, we've had it the last two or three years. And we show up here and I'm kind of expecting big things and we all peter out after about an hour because we're looking outside. And we forget it until November. So we, we have attempted that. And, and I hate to say this because it's going to make the finance department go twitchy, but I think we actually need to begin our budget, we don't need to have a workshop. We need to begin this process several months earlier and we need to finish it several months earlier. And whether that means beginning it July first or beginning it August first and getting through it. And I know that's a big change for the finance department, Bob, I, I know that. But if we got through it earlier, we could set them up for year-end much earlier. And we could set, uh, set the city on a little bit better understanding of where it's going to be in the employees and, and, and the public. So I'd, I'd like to see us just step back this whole process up by several months. But I will, we, we have tried and it's just a matter of what happens this come June or July. We seem to get, "Oh no, we're, we're getting twitchy. We need to start doing this." And we all manage to come in here, we say two or three things, bullet points, and then we're done. And we let it go. And that's our responsibility. So, um, if we want to change it, we have that option to change it. That's it.
Marty?
Yeah, I agree a lot with, with Matt's comments. And, and one of the other things that makes it hard to have the budget process this late in the season is when we get new council members. They get sworn in and they immediately get tossed to the lions with trying to figure out what the budget is and what the appropriate, um, way to handle is. And I, I don't know if it's possible and I don't know if you're ready to scream just hearing this, Bob. But, um, it, it would be nice if we could start it sooner for a lot, for some practical reasons too. Um, Matt's earlier comments, I thought he spoke very eloquently and I agreed with him. I had a, it was a difficult decision about the seasonal sales tax, um, versus a year-round sales tax. Um, and I, obviously I did vote for the year-round, but it was, it was a difficult decision. And I also appreciated Matt's comments about, uh, the budget process this year and that we didn't micromanage. I think some of us will remember, you know, half-hour conversations about whether we should have radios in some of the cars. And I'm glad that we're no longer doing that, um, and that we're looking more at, at a, a larger picture. Um, so anyway, I, I did want to say that I appreciate what Matt had to say earlier. And that was, that's my end for me.
Bob? Thank you. You know, I have to get on to Matt.
Matt, I can too. I, I, I don't disagree with a lot of stuff Matt brings forward. Uh, I enjoy the discussion with him. He brings up a lot of fine points. Um, the budgetary issue, like, it's almost like we've got to start watching budget today to try to figure out what we're going to do next year. And we do get in that end rush and we kind of go through things so fast. Um, and I think that as council members, we need to have a better understanding of, of our operation and our capital budgeting uh, so we can, we can get there. Um, you know, we talked about filling out some questionnaires for, uh, public works projects. And if you read through that, it looks like if they were granted, we'd have to go out and look for a four hundred, a four million dollar bond. And I myself would have a hard time supporting that bond at this particular point. Every time that we have bond indebtedness, it takes money from our operations and then we're looking at raising taxes to cover that and it's like the cycle you're talking about. Um, at what point do we start to pay off some of these bonds, we start to be able to capitalize and think about forward funding? Um, that's going to be really tough to do and some of our infrastructure we're going to be repairing rather than replacing when we do that. I'd also like to thank our, uh, flying crews. We had a power outage. They spent some, uh, hours out removing trees from lines and getting service back in. We had some parts of the community out of power for some time. Uh, they were balancing ideas of, of how to re-energize and get everybody back in place. But, uh, I thought they did a good job of responding and getting it taken care of. We fared better than some communities. They lost six power poles in a section of road over on Prince of Wales. Um, and of course they're trying to get that stuff all back together, but I'd like to thank them for the services. Uh, we do have good employees and we do do a lot of good things. Um, and it takes employees to, to keep the operation running and keep services out there to the public. We just have to decide whether we are going to reduce services and manpower in order to, uh, continue to keep our budget in check. I have a hard time with that because we don't have people, then we're contracting it out or we're paying overtime. We pay for it some. So anyway, um, and I'd like to thank the library for their, uh, check back to the community from, and all their efforts through that whole project. It was good to work with the, the library staff and, and the project itself. You know, and again, Matt has a lot of, uh, credit due for working with the friends at the library and getting that initiative back on track. So I'd like to thank him for that. That's all I have.
Thanks, Bob. KJ?
So I've got two things. Number one, kind of like it's daylight outside, I want to look out the window and you'll see all these big concrete things that run all around, quarter mile that way, quarter mile that way. Somebody paid for those. I know the state helped and blah, 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 blah. We didn't build those for the locals. I believe we built all those docks mostly for the tourists. I have no problem. I'm asking the tourists to help pay back for that. So I want to put that in back everybody's mind that I don't have any problem raising taxes for the tourists. Sorry if they don't like it. I don't have too much, too much. Not that I don't want them all. The other thing is I want to say from my, as a real heartfelt thing, that everybody on this council is trying their damnedest to run this city. This is a business. This is not just a fun thing we do every two weeks. You know, stuff like, this city is a business and it needs to be run like a business. Money in, money out, that is the entire concept of what should be done here. And I think this council generally did a pretty damn good job. We, we need to work harder on specific things. But I'd just like to say kudos to everybody on the council board, all the times you try. I think you do a damn good job, all of you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Um, I do th- thank the friends of the library for being here tonight and the check to the city, and, um, again, I'd like to mention the electrical crew getting out there and getting everything back up, the power going so quickly. Um, I know some are slow, I'm a little more because it took more work, but I'm glad they got her done, and I thank them for that. Um, on the budget thing, you know, I hear you guys talking, and I'm glad you have a, here, but I guess I'm, I've been here for so long, and I hope that's good, in a way. Um, you know, the budget, to me, is real, I'm so used to, to me, it's real easy. And, um, and all you have to, and all we have to do is give direction, and, you know, Dick can, um, came up with some direction last year. We said, "Hey, keep it at the same dollar amount." And that's what the management did, and then we have to decide if we want to, um, meet those, um, you know, there were some tough decisions to make, and we decided not to make all those decisions. Um, before that, we've always asked about the service level, and we've looked, um, at things we could do, and, you know, Bob or Dick or somebody comes up with a different idea, or Matt, and I, that's good. There's, that's why we have seven people here. And, um, so if you guys want to have another, I mean, we want to talk about the budget, or if you, um, one thing I've done most that did me the best when I first got on the council, I sat down with the, um, then, um, finance director. I went through the whole budget, budget by department, by department, and they educated me on everything and every fund. And that really helped me a lot to understand, because, you know, like, you say, "Oh, we're down, um, in our reserves." Well, you know, we've been, um, in our, um, other funds, our parking, our economic development, you know, we've loaned millions to the harbor and to KP who are paying us back. Um, so we have other monies coming in. I mean, there's a lot of little different things. If you, um, back when I first got on here, overtime was just profuse, and so, um, you know, to cut the overtime and save money, we hired people. And, um, so it is a, it's a crazy mix, and it, um, it, um, it's a crazy mix. And, but it's, if you, and the more you learn it, the more you ca- you catch on, and I apologize if I don't seem, um, like you don't under- if I don't understand or I'm sincere or whatever, it's not that way. It's just because I've been here longer, and I don't want, if you guys have questions, ask somebody. If you guys want a, a planning meeting or whatever, I'm all for it. But don't make, don't let it, um, seem that I don't care or I, um, don't understand. And, um, because I've been doing it for a while longer, so, and I apologize if I, um, anybody feels that way. Um, it's a good group, and, um, I enjoy working with you all, so. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes. One other thing, and I'd like to just mention that we did meet with this process today.
Oh, yeah, how'd it go?
Two-hour, two-and-a-half-hour meeting with them, yeah. Discussed a lot of different options and ideas. Bob was there, uh, Carl wasn't, uh, and through that discussion, we came up, they came up somewhat of a counteroffer, which he's gonna put together a memo, and we're gonna talk about that. And we'll plan to have another meeting with him going forward. Uh, and we'll inform you with the, most obvious information to get that out to you.
Excellent. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.